I entertain a motion to come out of closed session. That motion is second, start the vote Mr. Early? Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay certification resolution whereas the Carroll County Board of Supervisors convene the closed session in this state pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and on the motion to close the meeting in accordance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Whereas section 2.2-3711D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board of Supervisors that such closed session was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. We went under closed session under A1. Now therefore be it resolved that the Carroll County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered in a closed session to which this certification applies. And only such business matters as were identified in the motion by which this closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in a meeting to which this certification applies. I'll ask for certification, Mr. Early?
I so certify.
Mr. Collins?
I so certify.
Mr. Bryant?
I so certify.
Mr. Horton?
I so certify.
Mr. Moore?
I so certify.
And I so certify. And next on agenda is the Electoral Board.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Appreciate you all allowing us to be part of the agenda and present this evening. And I've got just a little something, do you guys mind if I share something with you?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I am Stacy Rebus, I'm the registrar, I've been here since July the first of 23. And I have my three Electoral Board members with me this evening, Carolyn Honeycutt, Brenda Diamond, and Brenda Lindsay. So if I misword something or forget something, I've asked them to step in and add to me, okay, if y'all don't mind that. We've got three different things that we want to ask you about this evening, and I kind of thought I'd go through each one, allow you all, you know, whatever questions or comments you have, and then move on to the next one, if that's okay. One thing, first issue that we have, and you all know, you've done this a long time, most of it, our polling places are established by the county by ordinance. We need to relocate one of our polling places because our Woodlawn, we actually have two polling places in the same room operating at the same time. And that goes against our 242307 in our elections law. They've got to be in separate divine spaces, separate equipment, separate officers of election, all that. The way that we're operating in Woodlawn, some of the election officials for one precinct are checking in election voters from another precinct, and we have to change that. We can't have two polling places in the same area. For one, that particular, the training center, or the senior center on Training Center Road, too small to do that with and have two sets of everything in there and really be able to function well and comfortably for everybody. But the equipment that we have with one set running, it would interfere with what the other polling place is doing, so we've got to physically separate those. We do have another polling location in mind, we've already checked on the facility, Mount Olivet Church, it's on the four lane going toward Galax. Talked to the folks there, they have checked with their church board, they have no objections to our using their fellowship area, not the sanctuary at all, but the fellowship area and backside of the church. We went over for a facility visit, we have, you all know this, a lot of ADA requirements, things that we have to have in place for Election Day. And with just a couple of minor tweaks here and there, all that's good, and they're in full agreement with us using that for our voting on Election Day. Not for March, but we would like to implement for June, because we're voting for that dual-party primary, March the 5th, that's four weeks from now, no way to do anything for the March primary. But that is what we need to do for Woodlawn. And it would be moving Woodlawn D, which has 2,278 registered voters as of a couple of days ago, from the senior center there at Hillsville to the Mount Olivet Church there on the four lane. Woodlawn E would stay at the senior center, so they'd have their precinct and the Woodlawn D would have their precinct, and that would actually put Woodlawn D back in its own district for voting.
I do have one question there, when we done that, I thought all we done was pulled the voting from Woodlawn School to the senior citizen building.
I'm sorry, say that.
From Woodlawn School to the senior building.
Well, and that, that may be what you did, okay. But they're actually two separate, and I think at one time it was three separate precincts. But now that they've pulled it down to two, and those two can't operate together and share equipment and all.
But they were at Woodlawn School?
Apparently so.
They were, yes. Always have.
Okay. I'm just making sure I followed it.
Some of that was before my time, so I'm sorry. But yeah, I guess we need, whatever steps we need to take to relocate that one precinct, then Mr. Durbin will know a lot more about the legal side of that than I will, so.
Glad to help, if I could ask a question, if that's all right, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
In terms of timeframe, when would you like to have that established? I'm reading this as something that's going to be subject to the pre-clearance requirement, either to submit to the Attorney General's Office or have the extended public hearings?
So we would be looking at June, because there's a possibility of having a June primary on June the 18th. We'd like to have it in place so that if we do have that primary, then we would have, you know, notice that to all those voters, and they would actually get to experience that in June instead of in November feeling like it was a surprise for them.
And I never have those, the days memorized, so.
June the 18th.
Bear with, June the 18th, so we, and we need to have the board have that adopted and in place.
Yeah, we would have to have notice mailed out to the voters 15 days before primary election, so early June.
Okay, so we would be looking to take action, take action promptly in the next meeting or two.
Yeah.
So that we can submit that to the Attorney General's Office. I can look, 45 day timeline, I think, is the, if we have the public hearing and the extended public comment.
Yeah, it takes a while if you go through that.
Yeah.
And then if you go through the DOJ and do all that, it, what, it's 60 days, I think, they have to respond maybe?
They do, it's, it's the.
It's pretty close either way, but that's one reason we wanted to kind of go ahead and start on it now, I know it seems kind of early, but all these things take a little bit of time.
I'm glad to be hearing about it now. There is time, but not a whole lot of time to spare.
Right, right. Does anybody, do you all have any other questions about that one? That's more a legal move than anything else, just to make sure we're in compliance with code there. Next thing we wanted to ask you all about, three precincts that we have below the mountain, we have Mount Bethel has 983 registered voters, then we have Lamsburg that has 1,200, I'm sorry.
Eight.
827 registered voters, and then St. Paul has 1,296. We have a hard time getting folks to work, those polling places blow the mountain, for whatever reason, weather, placement, what have you. We have significant issues with phone signal and Wi-Fi capability, most of the time, in some of these places, they can get outside and get to a spot and get phone signal, but our big concern is what if something happens in that polling place and they can't get outside and they have emergency, they can't even dial 911 from Mount Bethel and from Lamsburg. Now from St. Paul, they can. So we have a little more safety and a little more security, not just for the voters and the officers working, but like, we can't do it, of course, this either, of course, for March 5th, but if there happens to be a time in the schools, that schools in session while we're having an election day, something, you know, kids, faculty, there's a lot of factors involved and a lot of folks that we want to be safe. There's some limitations on space. St. Paul, we actually made a visit down there this morning, they have a nice big guidance area, nice big parking lot, ADA compliance as far as having curb cutouts for anybody that might have a wheelchair, walker, easy way to get up on the curb, they've got the ramps in place that meet all of our requirements. Doors have to be a certain width, they're meeting all of those requirements, they go straight into the polling place, as soon as they go through the doors, they're right there to vote. They've got a good spot for curbside voting. Curbside and handicap parking doesn't take up the majority of the parking available at the facility. Mount Bethel in particular has 982 registered voters, if you use the two parking spaces, we have to use for ADA for van accessibility, and then one for curbside, you've got like six parking spaces left for a little under 1,000 voters. They can go on down the road and park at the church, but then if you have bad weather, if you have rain, if you have wind, if you have whatever, they're having to walk through all that, you know, to get up to, just to get to the building. Lamsburg, it's a one-lane road in and out, and it's a lengthy drive, so if you meet somebody and there's snow on the ground or there's ice or whatever, part of that's somebody's yard, you don't want to have to get over in the yard for somebody just to get to and from the polling place. Spatial limitations for some of the voters, anybody that might need accessible voting equipment, we don't have a good spot inside some of the areas to set up our ADA units to where these folks can have the same privacy that other people, other voters have. We already mentioned the parking, we have the requirements on the van accessible, and it has to have a certain footage of an access, all those types of things. The curbside voting has to be within 150 feet of the polling place, and it needs to be on, again, just a stable surface. We're taking things out, but we don't want something happening to our officers if they get out. We have a lot of elderly folks that do work the polls, they may or may not have, you know, some mobility issues, we don't want them stumbling while they're trying to help a voter to vote a curbside ballot. A nice stable parking lot is just the preferred for voters, for workers, for everybody. And like I said, we're having a hard time recruiting and keeping folks for those three separate polling places. St. Paul is kind of what we're looking at as a meet in the middle to kind of solve most of these issues. The principal, I spoke with him, he has no objection to rolling those other two into the one and having the one polling place there at St. Paul. They have a dependable phone signal, they've got Wi-Fi, we checked that out this morning with our phones. Different, mine is Verizon, seems not to pick up where everybody else's does, US Cellular works there, the track phones work there, so pretty much anything anybody would have, they can actually make their phone calls in or out of that building. Curbside voters, when they're outside, they need to be able to let somebody inside the polling place know they're there. We have put up signs that says honk your horn or something like that. If you can see out the window, then yes, you might be able to see somebody sitting there, but if you can't, and they can't call you and it's busy inside, you can't always be sitting there looking out a window or checking at the door. So those curbside folks, they've got to have a dependable way to get a hold of the election officials inside to say, hey, I'm out here and I need to vote, so that we can not let those folks wait. There's plenty of space, we've got to have a 36-wide path of travel all throughout, just so somebody with a wheelchair or somebody with a walker or cane, or maybe somebody helping them get around if they can move around freely and not, not be too close to anybody, not interfere with anybody's privacy. And with all the pandemic issues and the flu and the strep and the RSV, you're just not on top of somebody else when you try to go vote. So it's safety issues there as well. And then they've got plenty of parking, like I said, the handicapped is right there at the door, right there at the ramp, and they would go up if that's needed. So that, moving or rolling those two into the St. Paul and having the one polling location for those folks below the mountain, we can pull some officers of election together. Right now, I've got two people that have signed up this year to work at Mount Bethel and three that have signed up to work Lamsburg. We've got several more at St. Paul, but if we could pull those folks, we could have another, if we needed it, another scanner could go in there, we can have more tables for people to actually vote once they get checked in. We can use the equipment we've had in the other polling places to have more laptops to check folks in, so it wouldn't necessarily slow things down by having more people because we could have more equipment as well, if need be. Y'all have thoughts or questions on that in particular? And that would be another, same kind of process that we were talking about, the DOJ approval, pre-clearance, or the public hearing time period for that as well, so.
Is that something that the Board of Supervisors makes a decision on whether that happens or not?
It is.
I mean, I think there should be a way of asking the people below the mountain how it's going to affect them.
Well, that's what the public here on the front.
Yeah, it, either way, it would have to be done by ordinance. If you submit to the Attorney General's Office, you would advertise with your normal timelines, still hold a public hearing, and then submit it to the Attorney General's Office for approval. The other way is to give, there's an extended public comment period, a 45-day period, you give notice, hold a public hearing, leave it open for additional time for comment, and then you would adopt the ordinance at that point. So both, both routes are viable under the Virginia Voting Rights Act, it's just a question of timeline. I think, off the top of my head, we've got enough time to do it either way if we start moving right now.
I bet your call tonight.
I do have one question, Mr. Durbin, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Can we discuss these in closed session after a bit, when we go back in? Can we go in under, could you?
If you're, if you're discussing a legal counsel, just advice, if you've got a legal question, then that would be permissible.
All right, would you see what number it would be, that way the board could discuss?
Anything else for me?
Thank you for coming.
I've got one more thing.
Okay.
Sorry. We've been making some ADA compliance visits to all of our polling locations. You all know, over time, things change, people remodel, requirements change as well, so we are trying to go around and look at all of our polling places, just make sure that we have what we need in place, see if there's anything we need to change or update or what have you. We visited the Vaughan Civic League Building, which is the Vaughan polling location, last week, and that, just getting there, getting, when you come off the road, you are literally dropping down from the pavement onto the gravel. It is a one-lane, and the best description I could come up with was gravel mud pothole. And I don't mean that to be offensive at all, but that's what it was when we went through. And you either have the briars and the bushes on this side or the pothole on this side, and I didn't really want to hit either one of them, but you just kind of have to pick your best path. You can't pull over if you made a vehicle coming out right there, and you really can't back up, because then you've got to bump back up over that onto a busy two-lane road. So the one lane there causes an issue. The road being mostly dirt creates an issue, all the rain and the snow melting or ice or what have you, that's kind of an issue in itself. When you get through the driveway, you're basically in a field. I think at one time, there may have been a gravel parking lot there, but it's been overgrown, the gravel has not, you know, I guess continuously been brought in, so it's basically grass, and we, you could actually see off the side of the polling location where somebody had been going around in the grass, and it did look like they'd gotten stuck, because you could see it looked like somebody had been spinning and trying to come out of there. So that, if people have two-lane, or two-wheel drive vehicles and you're going in and there's been a lot of rain or there's been snow and it's melted off or whatever, that, I could see folks getting stuck in that area. The building itself, it's their Civic League building, and I'm sure they enjoy having their meetings and things there, but it is an older looking building, it doesn't look like it has, I don't want to sound ugly, but it doesn't look like it's had a lot of maintenance as far as keeping it up, I guess is the gist of it. And we have, we have lucked out here just recently finding some folks, some new folks to step in there, but at one time, we were down to, nobody really wanted to work at that polling location. We have actually looked at a couple of places that are, one of them, you can just walk right up the hill and right there it is. And then another is on Hilltown Road, and that's kind of the path you'll take to get to this Vaughan Civic League building. It's two churches, again, it's fellowship halls, nothing in sanctuaries of any of these churches. We've reached out, and I know that the Pentecostal Holiness Church is going to speak with their board, and I'm waiting on a response from Grace Baptist Church, I have not heard back from them, but we do have a couple of other prospects, just for a better option for voting still in that community, but just a better maintained, I guess, more consistently maintained parking area, things on the outside, and then building on the inside as well. Questions on that one? That's just really a move to maybe a better spot for those folks to vote and for the officers to work.
I assume both of these churches have the ADA compliance.
That, we have to make visits to them, they would have to go to their boards and see if it's even something they would consider, but once they get that, then we can meet with them and take our checklist and go through.
The Grace Baptist Church is actually located in the former Vaughan School building, and they have upgraded it and bonded it and expanded it, so that without speaking outside there, we'd be able to talk to them. So I think that would be a good one. Also, another problem is the phone system is a little, Chief has to go out in the field sort of.
Yeah.
To use her phone to call and ask questions of the board.
Can't get phone local either. About have any more questions?
This seems like a lot, and we're a great, like, several years now, because we've just been participating in this life, and since you think that it needed to be a great, and we just kind of, for your ultimate, kind of.
Lumped it together.
Okay, we'll take it under consideration, thank you for coming.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yep. Next on agenda is Leader Task Force.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Evening.
We left you some paperwork there at each of your spots on January 4th. On January 4th, 2024, the task force elected new officers as follows. Judy Farmer, which is myself, as chairman, Beth Oravec is our vice chairman, and Jeff Garrison is our secretary. The following goals were set for the next year with the intention to pivot and move toward, forward as we meet each goal. School education is our first goal. We will start with the elementary schools to teach the students about recycling, littering, and accountability. The second one will be a cost analysis between convenience sites and door-to-door pickup. The third will be elderly services. We will research possible programs to help with trash pickup for the disabled and elderly, and grants for pickup, research available grants from a variety of different places. Of course, I will update you guys quarterly so that you know where we're standing and what we need from you. During almost the three years that we have been a task force, we have had trouble with attendance. And we've had several members resign. We've also had several new members join us, which has been wonderful. But we still have several seats to fill. As a matter of fact, we have four. And Mr. Dixon, we have Gerald Goad in your district, we need one more from you.
I thought we put Mr. Newman.
No, Mr. Newman will be under the at-large for the county.
Okay.
So we need one more from you.
Okay.
Mr. Early, we have a new member that I'm asking for you to appoint tonight, Tara Adito. I think you, she.
Yeah, I forwarded that to Ronald.
Okay, we, you guys actually have to appoint her, right? And then, Mr. Moore, you have me. There you are. You have me.
Got the chairman.
But we need one more from you. Mr. Bryant, we have Beth Oravec, and we need one more from you. Mr. Collins, we have Janice Crots and Ginger Williams, so you are good for right now. And Mr. Horton, we have Ronald Newman for you, so we need one more from you. One of the things that we wanted to let you know that we are doing, that we have already started on, is we are going to be having an Earth Day celebration. It will be on April 27th, even though Earth Day is on the 22nd. We're going to try to do some activities with the schools to lead up to the 27th. We've already got it in the works, we've already secured the parking lot across from the county farmer's market. We've also, I have been reaching out on Facebook, many of you may have already seen my posts on Facebook, looking for food trucks and vendors, people, businesses that want to be involved with this. We're also going to be going into businesses and asking for donations for prizes to hand out, to do things there. We already have one food truck that has committed to being there, and that was, I believe, their name is Purple Moon Cafe. And then Carroll County Tourism and Parks and Recreation both have said that they want to be involved in this effort as well. So we are working toward our goals already. We've had some visitors come in and talk to us about cost. Ms. Oravec is here with me today, and she's been researching some cost stuff on her own to help us. And so I think that, all in all, we are in a position to do a lot more this year than we have in the past two. As a matter of fact, I think we already are doing a lot more than we have in the past two. But I do ask that each of you be very diligent about making sure that we have those members. Because the more that we have working, the more that we can get done for our county. Y'all have any questions?
I do. First, thanks for all y'all do. I know I've heard from people, not recently, but within the past year or so, that maybe we're on the litter task force, and they felt like the Board of Supervisors, we weren't being proactive enough to try to accomplish some of your suggestions for litter control. How can we be more proactive to help you do your job?
Well, for one thing, make sure that we have the members.
Yeah.
Give us some ideas of, when you created this group, because you are the ones that created the group, give us some ideas of what you want to see us do. We would love to have some clear direction of what you foresee this group actually doing.
Okay. One of the things I brought up before, and I sent pictures to Ronald, unsecured garbage falling off trucks. I know you mentioned in here about working with law enforcement, where are you with that? Are they trying to help? Is it true that they actually have to see the bag of trash fall off before they can issue a citation?
It's a very fine line. I mean, they can give citations all day long, but to get a conviction is the fine line of seeing it. Because I could send my trash down the road with you, and you could drop it off in your truck by accident or on purpose for that matter, and they find my name in it and come to me, well, I didn't do that. So that's where they have the problem with, they have to see it fall off the vehicle. They have to see somebody littering. So that, yes, that is.
That's the law?
Yes, that is the law.
Okay, well, I would like law enforcement to be a little more proactive because how many pictures, bags of trash were in that picture I sent you? Four or five going, you probably saw it.
Oh, I saw it.
It's ridiculous.
It is ridiculous, and I believe that they are being a little more proactive since we've been created, since our task force has been created. We did have two officers on our committee. We have reached out to them because they have not shown up in a while. We did reach out to them, and they felt that they were in an advisory position for the committee. That would be something else that would be great is if, if they're advisory, then they feel that they don't have to show up unless we call them and say, hey, we need advice on this. But we kind of really meet them there every time. So that they can, if we're doing something and they can say, hmm, that's not going to work. So that would be a help, would be to have an officer. But I understand, too, they have jobs, and they've had a lot of stuff going on in the last year. And it's really hard to get an officer to come on his time off. I mean, I really hate to ask, knowing that they're stretched, they're stretched quite a bit. And, but we have, we do talk to officers, we do have day reporting. The officers that help with day reporting, and they are picking up trash every month. So we do have that support.
Have you thought about a litter tip line for people to call in? And, you know, you go out in the county, they're very rural parts, over steep banks off the side of the road. There's refrigerators, couches, mattresses, everything, tires.
Right.
Dump, you know, it looks terrible.
It does look terrible.
And, you know, people continue to do it until somebody arrests them.
And they have actually tried a little bit of everything on that avenue. And honestly, it's going to be up to us to not police, but to show people that there's a responsibility. I would love to see a new ordinance in the county for fines. You know, I've driven through places that have these big signs that say, you know, $3,000 for littering. Well, you know, that kind of makes you think, even though I'm not going to litter, it still makes you think, wow, I'm definitely not going to litter in this county because I'm not going to pay that $3,000 fine. And I don't see any signs that say a fine here in Hillsville. It's a $250 fine, by the way, if you are taking it for it.
That's exactly what I was asking earlier about, how can we be more proactive? We need an ordinance to specify fines for doing.
Could I jump in, Mr. Chairman? Two questions or observations. The Carroll County litter ordinance does provide for enforcement as a class-one misdemeanor in some situations. So have you heard from law enforcement, or there are things that they're asking for from us in order to change, to make that, so they can enforce it as a class-one? Because that carries a $2,500 fine.
I haven't heard anything on that. I didn't even know that that was a thing.
Okay. And the other question I have is, in your discussion regarding if it's not observed coming out of someone's vehicle or not, and I know that's difficult to catch someone in the act. The ordinance right now does say that if it's observed by any person, and it doesn't have to be law enforcement that sees it, if any eyewitness sees it, then it can be submitted to a summons, and the person who owns the car is the one who's presumed to have done it. And it's a rebuttable presumption, they could say, well, you know, someone else was driving it, I suppose. But it does at least give the law enforcement officer the ability to issue that citation. And I guess my question is, have they been trying that, and it just hasn't worked out in court, or?
I think that it hasn't worked out in court is, and, you know, once you go before a judge several times and they throw it out, I think they just say, well, this isn't going to work anymore, and they just don't do it. Because this is the first I'm hearing. Is that the first we're hearing of that?
Maybe that would be a good discussion to bring them in because I think we've got some options. We could make some amendments to the ordinance. Be good to know what might be, isn't working, or what might be working so far. So we're not changing something that could be effective.
Right.
And we are changing something that doesn't have enough teeth.
Okay, I'll do some research on that.
And feel free to check in with me, you can email or call.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for being open to those ideas. And finally, I've brought this up several times. Since the recycling moved from the landfill over to where it is, it is unsatisfactory. And I think I saw an email or some form of communication from somebody on the litter task force recommending that it be moved back to the landfill.
Yes, Janice Crots, and I thought she was going to be here tonight, I hope she's okay, was actually going to talk to you guys about that tonight. Like I said, I don't know what happened with her. She has formally asked that that be moved back. That is up to waste management.
It's up to the.
To the landfill.
The board, Solid Waste Authority Board. I would like to see it go back because the containers that are in place now at the business that does recycling are not satisfactory. And you basically have to load every 10 can by hand through a small hole on the side.
Right.
You know, and me personally, I'm not going to take the time to do that, although I have, and I will continue, but I really don't like doing it, so.
And you do have a member on the Solid Waste Authority.
I know, that's why I'm bringing it up.
I made a note.
We've had the discussion, we're both members on there, but it's, we'll discuss it again in our next quarterly meeting.
Well, the containers are different. I don't know how many of y'all have been to the recycling where it is now, do it sometime. Tell me how fun it is to try to get your recyclables into that container.
And if you can't get them in, people are going to just give up, and they're going to stop doing it. And then it's going to end up on the side of the road.
Yeah, or in the landfill.
We'll discuss it with them in our next meeting.
Unfortunately, when someone goes to a place to throw trash away or to recycle, they're not going to go to another place and pay to do it. They're going to throw it out their car.
Well, they never had to pay to do it at the landfill, I mean, that was free.
Right.
To drop it on.
The recycling was.
Yeah.
But you have to pay for your trash, so.
That's true, yeah, I see what you're saying. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Listening to my concern.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few, I just want to say thank you, first of all, for being here and the seriousness that you all have looked at this with, and the thorough job that you've done looking at options and ways, I mean, you know, thinking about the fact that you've got some elderly folks that may not be able to take trash to the road, things of that nature, I just appreciate that. I think one of the biggest things is awareness, and that's what you're bringing to it, and teaching the kids in school. There's so much, even adults who don't even think about it when they throw it on the ground. It's not something they think about. I did hear of one interesting this morning was on social media where people's trash in Cana was actually being stolen. And they think it's to get private information for scams and things of that nature. So maybe they'll steal it all and take it out of Carroll County. I mentioned this to our county administrator this past week. In Cana, where I live, they've gone back to, and I'm not sure who's doing it, so I'm not going to say who's doing it. But they've gone back to throwing out flyers in our driveways. From my driveway to the end of Flower Gap Road, it's less than two tenths of a mile. There are at least 20 of those flyers laying on the side of the road between my driveway and the end of the road right now. We don't want them. Some people are not going to go out and pick them up because they didn't put them there. They're, I mean, if you go.
Are these possible campaign flyers?
No, 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 they are like a sale paper kind of thing, it looks. I think it's advertisement paper, it's not a newspaper, but it looks like a newspaper. But, and I complained about this several years ago, and it stopped. But they're going through our community, doing it on a weekly basis now. Literally, some driveways have more than 10 of those laying where they've been for the last 10 weeks. So that's something we need to look into.
If you can pick up one of those flyers and find out who it is and email me with a copy, if you can take a picture of it.
I'll do that.
I will personally contact them and tell them that that is not acceptable.
Yeah, I agree, 100%. The other thing is, I'd like to see our board take an interest in Earth Day and help support that in every way that we can.
I will be contacting you again. We do, we have a lot of big plans for Earth Day. I think it is a way to get the community aware that we mean business. We're cleaning up Carroll County. And our motto is, love where you live, keep Carroll clean.
Thank you all for your work.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on agenda, a public hearing for Recreation Commission bylaws. We'll start the public hearing at 7:41. Anyone wish to speak, if anybody signed up? the public hearing at 7:41. Anyone wish to speak? Anybody signed up? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Um, next brings the citizens' time. Anyone want to sign up for citizens' time?
Okay.
I'm Beth Orvek, but I'm on the...
You need to come on at the podium and speak, ma'am.
I'm, um, Beth Orvek and I recently joined the litter committee and moved to the community. And I just wanted to thank you all for supporting the committee and the Earth Fair, or Earth, and just introduce myself.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you nicely. All righty. Uh, that brings us next on agenda to minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve, uh, A and B separate or together.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, there is an error in the January 22nd minutes, which I've given to, uh, Crystal and she has corrected them.
We received the email for it.
So, uh, I will make the motion to approve January 3rd minutes and the amended January 22nd minutes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, have a motion in a second. We'll start the voting with Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, the next on agenda is consent counter. Have a motion to approve the consent counter.
I'll make that motion.
You have a motion to have a second?
Second.
All right, start the voting. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Okay, next on agenda will be the invoices that we received. Um, entertain the motion to approve A and B together or separate.
I'll make the motion that we approve A and B together.
Okay, have a motion by Mr. Horton to have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Early. We'll start the voting. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That brings us to new business, um, the VSMP authority agreement that you received in your packet.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Have a motion to approve. Have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Not a start of voting. Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, next on the new business is the wastewater agreement that was in your packet. Um, this would be...
I'll make a motion to approve that as well.
Okay, have a motion by Mr. Moore to approve the wastewater agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, have a second. Any discussion?
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, in the agreement, I did notice that there is a, still a considerable amount of wastewater going to Galax from both Exit 19 and Woodlawn area.
Mm-huh.
And Glades, uh, Gladeville area, I think. Is that, is, I think we've been through this before and I hate to beat a dead horse, but, uh, is it not possible to send some of that additional wastewater to Hillsville?
Everything's possible, but unfortunately, uh, the way it's designed with the gravity feed and then goes to pump station, it's not a matter of turning the things down. It will, it pumps it to a certain area, gravity feeds it down to another pump station, then goes to the mire. You'd have to redesign the system and from my understanding, you'd have to run another line all the way back to Galax.
Well, I think Exit 19, there's plenty of gravity between there and where the sewage treatment plant is in town. But there's no line between the two.
There is, but it takes it back across and then go up.
Well, there's not a direct line.
By the training center.
Yeah, I mean, that's going out of your way to get to the place that's behind you.
It would take, it takes some engineering. You'd have to, uh, where it comes down Airport Road, with, when it gets to the top of the hill, when it makes a right to go toward the training center, you'd have to, um, it would have to go over that hump and then it would have to, you'd have to run it down by X on the tight end.
You're missing the point. I'm not saying do any of that. Run a line directly to the Hillsville plant.
We are picking up from Exit 14 to...
Exit 19. It's straight downhill to the treatment plant, but there's, there's no direct line between the two.
We can look into it, see if there can get a cost estimate or something on it.
It was looked into 20 years ago. And then we got sidetracked and started sending everything to Galax. That's all.
That's all. Okay. Any more discussion? Start the voting. Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, the, uh, next on the agenda is the Recreation Commission bylaws. We had a public hearing on. Um, I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Have a motion by Mr. Moore to have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Collins. Okay, we'll start the voting. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next on agenda is, uh, item E, B-DOT resolutions.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve Duncan Mill Road, the Kaiser Road, the Mill Creek Road, the Misty Trail and the Panther Creek Road, all in one motion.
Okay, have a motion to approve, um, all five of these under the B-DOT resolutions. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll start the voting. Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Any more, uh, committee appointments?
I'd like to make the motion to nominate, uh, Jamie Edwards to the library task, library board.
Okay, have a motion for Mr. Edwards for the library board. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Collins. We'll start the voting. Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And do we have any more?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for Mr. Mosley for the Social Services Board.
Okay, have a motion for Mr. Mosley for the Social Services Board. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I'll second by Mr. Horton. Start the voting. Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
I'm staying.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Is there any more committee appointments? Okay, uh, well, next on agenda is, uh, item E, B-DOT resolutions.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve Duncan Mill Road, the Kaiser Road, the Mill Creek Road, the Misty Trail and the Panther Creek Road, all in one motion.
Okay, have a motion to approve, um, all five of these under the B-DOT resolutions. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll start the voting. Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That brings us to old business. Mr. Watson, do we have any old business you worry about? Any, I didn't want to discuss any. Old business?
No, I don't have any.
Okay, that'll bring us to board member comments. I'll start with Mr. Early.
I have no comments. Thank you, like, once again, to everybody that makes our meetings so easy. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Collins?
Just to reiterate what I said, as far as the litter task force, I appreciate the work that's being done, our staff that, again, makes it easy for us to have our meetings. I appreciate the work they do. And Mike, appreciate all that you're doing for our county.
Thank you. Mr. Bryant?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank all the staff and, uh, thank all the, uh, new committee appointments, uh, for, uh, appointees, rather, uh, for their willingness to serve and, uh, to help, help out the county.
Mr. Horton?
Yeah, I just also want to thank the staff for everything you guys are doing for us. Uh, me and Bill both are still on a learning curve and we couldn't be doing what we're doing at this point without your guys' help. Just want to tell you thank you again for everything and I look forward to the new people that we put on the different committees and I love the direction the county's going in right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
I'll just reiterate what everybody said. Thank staff, thank, um, county attorney for all he does, Mike, Justin, Crystal, all the employees it takes to keep the county running and each of you board members for your dedication to the county.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I forgot one thing I wanted to mention. Could we have staff look into a, an ordinance concerning or applying to campaign signs, uh, how long they can be up after an election? Because there's still a lot of them around in the county that should have been gone months ago. Is there anything in place currently, Mr. Durbin, regulating that?
There's nothing currently in place. Um, that's really a, a land use kind of regulation. Um, you do have to be cautious with that because there are, um, it, it's expressive speech, First Amendment rights. Um, so, if someone wants to keep it up, um, you've got to deal with the tension between, between First Amendment and, and, um, having unsightly or derelict signs that people haven't picked up. But I, I don't believe there's anything in place right now.
Well, I'm certainly in favor of the First Amendment, believe me. But, uh, it becomes a question of whether or not it's litter. It's beyond its useful purpose. It should be taken down.
At some point, it becomes, uh, litter, especially of those disposable signs as they deteriorate, they're no longer conveying a message. I, I, I hear what you say. I hear what you're saying.
Is it worth looking into or not?
It's worth looking into.
Right.
Mr. Moore, you...
That's all I have. Thank you.
Can I comment on that, Joey? And I think maybe what Joe's talking about, I...
Yes.
I see those signs too. And I have called the person and said, you want me to pick that sign up?
Well, I've done the same.
If they're on the side of the road, yeah. I mean, there are some yards, I know what Steve's saying, that people still want them in their yard. But a lot of these you're talking about are on the side of the road that's on the right of way or...
And I've done the same thing. I've called the person whose name is on the sign and said, hey, you still got a sign out.
Yeah, yeah. I think those just get left there.
Or put there without their knowledge, probably.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, sorry for the pickup. All right. Um, so I'll go last. I do want to thank staff and, um, everyone that does serve on the board for your hard work and litter task force and everybody that came out tonight and, um, all the ones that volunteered to, to serve and, uh, Crystal and Mike and the staff, you do a great job. Do appreciate it. Um, the PSA, uh, staff, I'm meeting earlier and we, like I was saying, we've had a lot of, when the ground freezes and falls, you get some leaks and, uh, we're very fortunate to have them repaired in a very timely manner and I very appreciate it with that too. So, that brings us to county administrator comments.
I don't have any.
County attorney comments?
Uh, no comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So, um, I'm gonna make a motion, or I'm gonna entertain a motion to go back into closed session. Mr. Durbin, uh, what will be going under?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This would be, uh, Virginia Code Section 2.2 dash 3711, subsection 8.5, discussion concerning prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. And the, um, specific topic would be, um, discussion of, uh, possible, um, local incentives.
Okay. Um, and I will tell everyone's business, we're, we're going, when we get back, we're just going adjourned. So, um, I'll entertain a motion, um, to go into closed session. It's authorized by Virginia Code Section 2.2, 3711, section 8.5.
I'll make that motion.
A motion to have a second?
Second.
Let's start the voting. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
I vote yes.